Our new lieutenant, unfortunately, he wasn't able to make it this evening. But we do have a new lieutenant. It's Lieutenant Phil Kones. I know, I feel like I come in every month and say, hey, I have an acting lieutenant. But I now have a real lieutenant and he's here to stay. Um, I'm excited. So hopefully he'll be able to make it to our next meeting. I'm sure that you guys will see him at many events. Um, I also want to remind everyone that we will be having our national night out tomorrow night. I know that normally we have it over at our station. But we're going to do the same thing that we did last year due to the pandemic. We're going to be driving around um and meeting with neighborhoods. So a lot of the neighborhood watch uh presidents have been reaching out to us and giving us addresses. And we're going to try to hit as many as we can. So we'll be out and about. Uh, we're going to be starting up in Ranch Bernardo, Ranch Penasquito, Scripps Ranch, and wholly get uh get through over to Mayor Mesa area. Um, the hot topic right now for us, I know that we're getting a lot of complaints regarding the racers. Uh Barry and I and uh we've been working with the managers at a lot of our properties, which is great. So there's a lot of behind the scenes stuff that's going on right now. I know it's frustrating and I know like it seems like nothing's being done. But I promise you, we are working really hard right now. It's been a problem from Scripps Ranch to Mayor Mesa. So in our division itself, it's a problem citywide, uh but we are working on that right now. Uh, we also did a community walk through the shopping center over by Jimbo's Liquor and over by Jack in the Box. We were getting complaints, um some homelessness problems in the area. So we went through and spoke to all the managers there and all the different businesses. And we're going to get on board with letter of agencies. Um, if there's anyone out there that's having issues in their community or in their little business area, please let me know and we'll be more than happy to come out and do a little walk through uh through your little community also. Anyone have any questions for me?
See, Joe Sis hand up.
Uh, yeah. What was the lieutenant's name?
Lieutenant Phil Kones. The last name is K O N Z.
It sounds like.
K O N Z.
Correct.
Sounds like they named him after that old TVs we used to have years ago.
Oh, really? I'll have to tell them that.
Yeah, Filco TVs, those big.
Oh, Filco, right.
Alright, thanks.
And.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Officer Santos? Okay, well.
Oh, I got a, I got a question.
Oh, yes.
I, I noticed they, this week, I think it was, or maybe or last week, they came by um city, a couple of police cars. Um, and cleaned up the bushes at the corner of Reagan and Mir Mesa. Um, homeless camp in there.
Yes, I know that a lot of them have been going through. Um, I put in a request and actually a lot of systems been putting in requests for Reagan, Mayor Mesa, Montago area, and then also the pedestrian bridge is a big one.
Yeah, between Reagan and and Montango. Uh, I, I noticed like within two days after it going through, there was already some people moving back in. I was wondering if there's a long, longer term plan, like cutting down the bushes or?
I know the homeless outreach team was out there and they were asking for assistance. Then the guy that was going through helping out clean out there from the city, um he did email me. I was gone last week. I will reach out to him and ask him if do they plan on cutting bushes? I'll ask him what the long term.
Because otherwise it just seems like we're, we're get, we're paying for like free housekeeping to come through and clean up every month. And then they just move, stay in there.
Okay, yeah, I'll ask him because I know that the bushes over there were an issue. And then, like I said, the pedestrian bridge, and I know that they hit both spots the last two weeks. So I will ask them what their plan is for long term.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Um, I'll go ahead and ask, I don't see uh Joe Raimondo from the fire department here, but I'm not seeing uh, you know, the entire meeting on my one screen is um Captain Raimondo here from the fire department.
He's not on the participant list now.
Okay, so well, we'll pass over that part for right now. And then I realized that I already gave the president's report on Barry's behalf, but I neglected to call for approval of the minutes of our last meeting, which was the June Mir Mesa Town Council meeting. So Mir Mesa Town Council members, the minutes have been posted on the Mir Mesa Town Council website. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes before we vote for approval? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I approve.
Minutes are approved. Okay. And now.
One other thing, Mike might mention that the, um, you mentioned the newsletter before. Just mentioned the newsletter is posted on the homepage of the uh of the town council website.
Right, and it did get posted a little bit late this, this month. So if you haven't seen it yet, please check it out because there's a lot of good information in it. There's an article from our county supervisor about things going on in the county. There's information about the epicenter reincarnation. And as I mentioned in Barry's president's report, information about the three different committees that are now starting up for August. Um, okay, so we'll move right along into our featured program time. And the first thing we have on the agenda is recognizing two wonderful Mir Mesa High School students who have designed the current banners. How many folks have seen the banners along Mir Mesa Boulevard now? Very colorful, yes. So I'll, I'll call in Jennifer Paul that to go ahead and introduce the students and say a few words.
Yeah, hi, good evening, everybody. So yes, I do want to recognize Daisy Martinez and also Alicia Brofes. Uh, hopefully I said that correct. And also their instructor at Mir Mesa High School, Art Spurlock, who is the graphics teacher and he should be very proud. So both times we've had our banners up, it's been his students that have done the artwork. And as you recall, the last set of banners that we have, um, that's been up there for about 10 years. And that was also a Mir Mesa High School student. So we still have those. We, we like those. I told them to hang on to them um in case we ever want to kind of switch it out a little bit. So um the story behind, of course, is that um I wrote a grant, uh CPPS grant for eighty five hundred dollars and we were given that. And so then the next step, of course, was to find somebody to do the design. So, because I was like, oh, I'm not doing this. And it, we weren't meeting in person, so it was a little bit hard to try to, you know, put the, get the word out and have people, you know, submit designs and a lot of times that doesn't go real well anyway. So I went to Mr. Spurlock and asked him if he has some students that would be interested in submitting some designs, keeping in mind our close knit community, um, you know, everything that we have to offer, our diversity. And so these two students came up with these beautiful designs. We liked both of them. So we thought it'd be a good idea to have both. And so that way, you know, I don't know, doesn't get a little, it doesn't get boring. You see one and then you see another design and so it switches off. So um without further ado, of course, we want to recognize you guys. If you have anything you want to say or what made you think of the design that you did come up with? I would, we'd love to hear from you. And Mr. Spurlock, if you have anything you'd like to say?
No, I, I'm leaving it completely up to you. I'd just say that uh the two students are absolutely wonderful. They were two of my best students and that's why they were chosen. And uh I asked them to work on it exclusively. So I'm, I'm extremely proud of both of them. They're, they're absolutely wonderful students.
And I guess now is probably a good time. Jennifer, you had volunteered to be the one to screen share the photos of the banners. Could you do that now so that we?
Yes, I can.
Their artwork?
Did you give me the special magic to do that?
Uh, just one second, I will.
Yeah, share my screen. Wait, how do I do that again?
Click on the green, green button on the bottom.
My green, oh, duh. Okay, I'm sorry. It's been a while since I was doing that virtual, you know, uh teaching. Okay, so you guys can see my screen now?
Uh huh.
Okay, so there's one of them. I tried to get a little bit closer. This is the actual, the banner company that um sent me the pictures after they had put them up. And so that was really nice that they sent those because of course they do it in the middle of the night uh because they have to do it with a cherry picker when there's not as much traffic. So those are the two designs. And so they, they're alternating all the way from the fifteen down to the eight oh five. So they are beautiful. So girls, have you seen your own banners? Because I know one of you just got back from your vacation.
Would your students like to review themselves?
Yes, I was actually able to see it like um the day after I came back from my vacation and it looks really, it looks better than what I expected it to look like.
Can I ask who did which?
Um, my name is Daisy Martinez and I did the um, the colorful one, the one with the holding hands.
Okay.
Shaking hands, yeah.
And I assume that your, your thought behind that was, of course, our close knit community and yet it's a very large community.
But yes, that's correct, yeah.
Yeah. Alicia, are you there?
Hello.
Hi, you want to um?
Hi, I'm Alicia and the design I did was on the left and you could see like, I haven't really seen it in Mir Mesa yet, but I keep being sent like photos of my own banner. It does make me happy.
Well, you're famous. Yeah, if you don't have these photos, I can send these to you as well, so. Um, I'll stop sharing. Um, I know that we have a presentation for you guys or a gift for you guys from the town council. Um, Pam, did you want to tell them?
Yes, I, I can, I can mention that we have some wonderful certificates for both of you that I will be picking up tomorrow from the print shop. And we also have some, uh, some gift cards for you. And again, because of going virtual tonight and also because our president is out sick and as the vice president, I'm chairing tonight's meeting, we're, we're a little bit behind in actually getting those into your hands, Daisy and Alicia. But uh, yeah, we, we will get them to you. And I will share that I saw the banners, we saw the banners, Jeff and I, when we were coming home from vacation and driving, getting off um at what our kids used to always call the wake up place, where you get off the freeway in Soretto Valley and then come on Mir Mesa Boulevard and seeing the banners all along the Boulevard, it was welcoming us home and it was so wonderful. So thank you so much for designing those.
Yes, thank you. They're very colorful. So yeah, we have a couple of Visa gift cards to give you. And then I personally wanted to give you some Starbucks, so you got some Starbucks coming. So as soon as Pam gets the certificates and I'll, um, you guys just need to text me your addresses and I'll get those to you, okay?
Perfect.
Sound like a deal? And uh there's a message from Mr. Lundberg, thank you, to Daisy and Alicia. Miramar College would be happy to welcome you and your call and your colleague. Let us know when you're ready to come to our way. So anyways, thank you, girls. Thank you, Spurlock, for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, well, after that, I think we'll move on to our next uh main program topic, which is meet the candidates. Mir Mesa has a new state uh assembly district. We are going to be in the seventy eighth district following this fall selection. And so we have uh, um, let's see, I think we have both the incumbent Chris Ward. Is Chris here?
I don't see him here, no, I see.
Oh, he's not here yet. Okay, well, we're, but he knows that we're doing, when we're doing this, right? I, I hope, uh, okay, well, we, I know we have Eric Gonzalez here. And uh, why don't we go ahead and get started with giving Eric some time to introduce himself and take questions? And uh, um, Assembly Member Ward will probably be joining us fairly soon. We're actually still running a little bit of, well, no, we're not really ahead of schedule. We're on schedule. So uh, I will uh turn the floor over to Eric Gonzalez.
Hi Pam, thank you guys for here at the Miramar Town Council for having me uh come on to the Zoom meeting tonight. I appreciate the, the exposure. Um, as some of you may know, I am a lifelong resident here of Mir Mesa of twenty seven years. Now, I say lifelong, that's my adult life, that is. I've been here since nineteen ninety seven and I've been trying to leave Mir Mesa, but Mir Mesa is a beautiful place that keeps, has a special place in my heart that I always wanted to stay here. And then to be told, I have my kids here, they go to school here, they go to school in the local community. Um, and so that, I just want to say just, we're, we're here together. And the reason why I'm running for the seventy eighth assembly is because like some of you, I'm tired of how Sacramento has been treating us as, or as being overtaxed, passing legislation that doesn't really meet the standard that we need to have. So my four points of my campaign are zero more, no more taxes, zero taxes on any of you. In addition to being school choice advocate, meaning for pro education, in addition to being pro life and pro gun. And happy to meet all of you. And also I'm a retired Navy veteran of twenty three years.
Okay, are there any questions for Eric?
So I'll ask a question. The, the um, the state legislature passed SP nine and SP ten recently, which allows the um basically anyone in a single family neighborhood to demolish a residence and build four on the same spot. SP ten does something a little more dense near a transit center. Um, so I'm just curious what you think of those proposals and what you think this state should be doing, if anything, about the um housing availability?
So that, so those two particular bills, I would have to say that I'm against that because we shouldn't be, especially in a single, single home community. We want to make sure that we're just building single home developments, not having four developments within one parcel or home site. Because that, what that does, that causes more traffic congestion that we have seen in here in Mir Mesa. We've seen a lot of traffic congestion that's here locally. And so we wanted, we got to kind of try to curb that a little bit. But with all in all, we just need to make, make sure at the state level that we're actually looking at projects that are being proposed that they do in fact help the community, not hinder the community in, in every aspect from roads, from taxes to everything.
So Chris Ward has just joined us.
Excellent. Okay.
Not visible yet, but he's there.
I, I see him. He is in the process of materializing.
We are, yes, we are getting logged on. Good evening, everybody. If I can hit my buttons in the right order, then I can see you too.
Excellent, great. Well, this, this is perfect timing because Eric Gonzalez has just introduced himself and Jeff had asked a quick question. So let me turn the floor over to you to introduce yourself and then we can continue to field a few questions for either or both of you. That would be wonderful. And I'm Pam Stevens, I'm vice president. Barry Vaz, our president, uh, is out sick tonight. She apologizes for not being here, but glad to welcome you.
Thank you, Pam. Thank you for the kind introduction and sorry to miss Barry as well. I appreciate reaching out. I see my good friend Bernie Reiterson, our trustee on the Community College District here as well. And I want to thank you all for the opportunity to say hello. Um, my name is Chris Ward on the current Assembly District Seventy Eight representative uh for the San Diego region, which at the moment right now is a slightly different district, but I'm lucky that the new boundaries are going to be incorporating the community of Mir Mesa and some of the uh, the, the neighborhoods around you as well. Um, right now it's a district that is largely coastal uh and includes parts of the mid-city communities, uh like my home community of University Heights. Um, redistricting, of course, uh will officially take effect after the November election. So we're voting for the next two-year representative. Uh, that is actually going to incorporate Mir Mesa, Claremont, San Carlos, San Diego State College area and so many other neighborhoods in the central, central part of the city of San Diego. This is uh just my first term uh on the state assembly. But of course, um, I maybe had a chance to engage with some of you in the past uh when I was on the San Diego City Council alongside Councilmember Kate uh for the uh term from twenty sixteen through twenty twenty. And at the time, served as the chair of the Regional Task Force on the Homeless, working on some of the really present challenging issues around those, uh around uh some of our biggest, um, one of our biggest challenges. Um, personally, I'm a parent of two young children, uh have a little daughter who's going into third grade, uh just turned eight years old, and a little guy uh who's four and uh is in daycare. So uh very familiar with some of our challenges as a working family. Um, up here in the assembly, we've had a really busy start uh to, to my, my time up here. Uh, I'm currently, I have already risen to the post of Assistant Majority Leader and serve on uh our standing committees around housing, community development, transportation, water, emergency management, and labor and employment. And I'm running for reelection uh on these experience, on this experience and the results that we've already been delivering and that we're positioned to be able to do more uh for our region. Um, I, I can go by way of introduction into a lot more, but um if you'd, Pam, prefer that I say that maybe for some Q and A, um, you let me know. I wasn't sure how long you.
We're fairly informal tonight. I think that's good for an introduction. And why don't I go ahead and uh open it up to any particular questions for uh Assembly Member Ward and/or for Eric uh or for both of them? I'm not sure where that came from. Yes, let's see. Uh, are there hands raised for a question? Who would like to ask a question?
So I don't see hands raised, but I, I can ask one. We do have a problem with the homeless here in Mir Mesa that's been getting worse. I'd like to ask both candidates how they would handle the homeless problem.
Go ahead, Chris.
So it's uh complex. So uh the root cause of homelessness is those without a home. Uh, we have had, and that is, that's absolutely um evident in any of the analysis that's done. The more expensive that you see your housing stock getting, the more and more families and individuals fall into homelessness. Uh, some of the most effective things that we can do, I've done and have been working on is diversion programs, trying to stop people from falling into homelessness in the first place. We have to work on increasing our affordable housing stock and there's been a variety of both bills and budget support that we've been delivering down to local governments and to our uh Regional Task Force on the homeless to be able to develop that more over time. We have a lot of catching up there to do. And then, of course, yes, many of our homeless individuals also have challenges with uh serious mental illness or with um substance use. One of the bills that I'm working right now is to actually increase the number of substance use counselors that are able to get out there faster onto the streets and then to work on uh Care Corps, which is a, you know, pretty um broad initiative that the governor is proposing uh to be able to help individuals um that aren't able to help themselves uh really stay connected with supportive networks. So there's a, there's a lot in motion. Um, we rely, of course, on our county and our cities to do the work. And then, of course, from the state, we want to make sure that they are well supported um to be able to amplify the right solutions that are going to end homelessness.
I, I would agree with, with uh Assembly Member Ward, however, I would take a different route. We do have a, a serious problem with homeless, not only just in Mir Mesa, but around the, the city of San Diego and the county. So what I would do, when I first moved to San Diego, we had mental health facilities that actually helped and care for those that were, that fell into the homeless community. And, and as Assembly Member Ward said, that we, some of them have challenges like mental health and substance abuse. And those facilities would actually help them to encourage them to be able to provide the necessary resources. And to, today, we don't have those facilities anymore. So we need to go back to providing those necessary resources and facilities to be able to mitigate those types of, of homelessness crisis from happening again. It's going to be challenging and like Councilmember, or Assembly Member Ward said, it is a challenge, but I think as a community and as a state, we can overcome that together.
Thank you. Uh, yes, Bernie.
Uh, thank you, everyone, and uh good evening to all you members at the Mir Mesa Town Council. Glad to be here tonight. Uh, I just wanted to ask Assemblyman Ward to talk about how he's worked with our Community College District on some pretty important legislation that will help Miramar College and help us work with the military. And Chris, I can't remember the bill, but I think it has something to do with us uh doing classes on Miramar, unless I'm thinking of a different bill, but I know.
You might be thinking of a slightly different bill, but I'll tell you one that I did work on on this year and we're going to keep working on it is to try to help um our service members and their spouses in particular, who are coming into the area right now, um more readily transfer a teaching license. Um, so uh working with San Diego Unified, in addition to the Community College District, we know this is a barrier for those that are coming in and then have to retake the test and retake the certification. And most importantly, they actually are having a gap in employment now when we need the teachers. Um, so uh it's a win-win there. We are uh working with the Department of Education to try to streamline that and that's actually legislation that got stuck in one of our committees. Um, we are going to unstick that and keep working on that issue. Uh, with the Community College District, um Bernie know well, we've also been working on some of the um HUD, um, some of the funding formula for tax credits and for.
That's it.
Student housing, for faculty housing, that bill is moving forward. Um, so it's uh trying to get out of Senate appropriations right now. And uh I've got to just uh hand it to our leadership with the college district. They uh are really taking a statewide um position to try to actually model how we can do um shared student and faculty housing right on the college campuses to serve the, 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 the population um that, that needs it the most.
Yeah, thank you for that. And Pam, I'll report on that a little bit later about how we are working on, on housing. But uh the Assemblyman's been very helpful in, in getting one of the hurdles that we have taken care of by carrying this legislation. And thank you for that answer.
Thank you for sharing that. Um, you know, one thing, a question I'd like to ask both of the candidates is that as Jeff and I were recently on vacation, traveling up to Oregon to visit my sister and coming back down the state, and we had the opportunity to enjoy a number of our state parks and state beaches. And that's such a fabulous system. I, I am very happy about it. And I guess I'll just throw the floor out and maybe I'll, I'll start with Eric as the challenger and Assemblyman Ward to, to just put in your two cents worth about what you would do, both of you. Uh, Eric, if you're elected and uh Chris, um, if you're reelected, to uh make sure that that stays something wonderful, both for uh the wild resources and for, for people to enjoy.
Thank you for that question, Pam. Of course, what I would do is I would ensure that our Parks and Recreation Committee has the enough, enough resources to be able to provide the necessary outlooks of how we view California as the golden state. California has always been a golden state, but we got to make sure that we keep it that way by making sure that we have our beaches and wilderness really, really back to how we should have it back in the days when I first moved to California. There, there's a lot of issues that we have that we need to overcome first. Uh, first, we got to be careful with the beach, make sure we don't wash away the sand too much because there's a bunch of wash that keeps on going away that erodes our beaches. And then, of course, the wilderness where we have too many fires that are unfortunately started. But of course, we can correct that by providing the necessary resources to be able to give ourselves the right wilderness and the right forestry, as well as the right beaches to have view from, not only from Humboldt County all the way to San Diego County.
Yeah, and I would echo that too. We all, we as Californians, love our open space. We love our park systems. We should actually be really proud in San Diego. I think we have over two hundred and sixty state parks in the, in system and that includes a lot of our historical sites. Um, but some of the best are right in our own backyard. Uh, when we think about Torrey Pine State Beach or Silver Strand, Borderfield State Park, and then, of course, one of the most visited state parks in the system is Old Town, right here in the Seventy Eighth Assembly District. Um, so we really should celebrate that, support that, but also make sure that there is sustainable maintenance. Um, Pam, like you, I've loved being able to visit so many of these parks. But when you go up to Oregon, or most recently about a year and a half ago, I was in Arizona. Um, we had some work to do. Um, they're taking a lot better uh care, especially with a lot of the public serp, public facing services and facilities that are there. Uh, and if you try to camp at any of our campgrounds, you know, uh many families are getting priced out. Some of the more coveted places, especially along the coastline, going for sixty dollars or more a night for a campground, that's really shutting out a lot of Californians from that same kind of access and opportunity uh to be able to enjoy those park space too. Um, so um they're, they're loved, they're used, and they deserve our support beyond the budget. Um, I see um uh the, some of the work that we need to do to sustain a lot of the, uh, these beautiful spaces through the work that we're trying to do on climate policy. Um, a lot of the very same threats that we are seeing because uh. A lot of the very same threats that we are seeing because that, that parks might be experiencing with ecological harm. Or beach erosion, or any of the other effects that we're seeing are related to some of the changes that we're experiencing now and are unfortunately likely to get worse as climate change. Continues to actually have impact in our communities. So I, you know, talk probably for a few other minutes, I won't. On some of the work that we are doing that is intended to be able to help reduce greenhouse gas emissions and support. Climate infrastructure, but I think that they're really are interconnected.
And I see Wes has his hand up.
Wes.
Oh, thank you. I was, I probably should have lowered it. I was actually going to clarify. The question on the, the Miramar funding that was on the educational trailer bill. And it was, it was sponsored by Assemblyman Brian Mainshine. It's two, and I'm going to report on that when, when we get to my, my thing there. Hi, Rob. I just, I just noticed you there.
Yay, excellent. Actually, since you know, our current incumbent Assemblymember is Brian Mainshine and Rob Knudsen. Is a rep for him and will hear for his report a little bit later on too, but I was wondering if just as somebody. As, as the rep of someone who has been representing Miramasa, if you have any questions for Assemblymember Ward and or. Eric Gonzalez, that as, as you know, coming in to. Start representing Miramasa that you might be able to ask them a question that would, or, or give, give advice or both. Oh, you're muted.
I don't, I, I certainly don't know if I could add, add to this, but. I will say that, you know, Assemblymember Mainshine's office and, and I've personally been able to work with. Assemblymember Chris Ward's team on a number of issues and knowing the transition is coming. You know, we've been very visible and, and, and communicative and trying to work to make sure it's a very seamless transition, hopefully. Again. No, I, I haven't had the opportunity to, to talk with, with Eric Gonzalez, but like you, I, I grew up in Miramasa. It's, it's a very near and dear community to me. I'm not too far. From Miramasa. So, you know, I, but I, I believe, you know, Assemblymember Ward is. You know, he's been, he's, he's participated in a handful of meetings with several different. Type of property owners out, out in the district with, with the Assemblymember. So I think he's really. Rolling up his sleeves and, and really trying to get to know the community a little bit better. If he doesn't, you know, seems like he's got a pretty good grasp on it now. But I've been, I've been very, his office has been very welcoming and, 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 you know, collaborating and trying to collect information. So. You know, and, and, you know, with Eric, who's lived in the community for 27 years, you know, it's, it's, you don't need to live in Miramasa very long to understand that. Traffic issues, the housing issues and, and obviously our, our schools and making sure the infrastructure and that's what we've been advocating, you know, in the 77th. You know, Brian, Brian's history goes all the way back to San, the San Diego City Council. So, you know, I, I, I think. Miramasa is tracking in a, in a very good direction and, and as President Wes said from Miramar College, we actually, he and I have some. Very good news. Christmas does come in July. Not necessarily, we don't have to wait for December, but I think later on when, when here are my report. You're good, Miramasa is gonna, gonna smile tonight. So we're very excited.
Well, thank you. Okay. Well, just to wrap up then our meet the candidates section here, unless there, are there any other questions? Because if not, I thought I'd give each of them a minute or two, just to say any final words that they want to share with us about them, themselves and, and their goals, et cetera. So. Don't see any other hands up. So. Eric, you want to go first?
I'll, I'll do, I'll let Assemblymember Ward go since he is the current incumbent. So I'll give him the honor of the floor.
Sure. Yeah, happy either way. Thank you for a little bit of time to introduce myself. I look forward to our upcoming dialogues as well as the election. Draws a little closer in November and then if successful, certainly I'm very excited to be able to help work with you as our town council. To reach out to all of our citizens and all your community needs and see, see how the state can help. We, of course, like Robin mentioned, have an active district office right now. It is really essential for that to be a good representative that we've got. Good eyes and ears here on the ground who are engaged with you. If anybody needs help with state agencies, or we're trying to put out public service events, or. Just more importantly, we have an ongoing proactive feedback loop on what some of the bills are that are coming up so that you know. And you can provide that input. I see that input. I, my staff up here in the Capitol actually is really, really good about making sure that before I can take a chance to vote. That I've got all that input in front of me on the computer. And then, of course, working with a lot of our local entities, MTS, Sandag, or School District, or Community College District. These are very strong relationships and values that I think are going to help me be a successful Assemblymember for you in the coming term. So thank you for the time tonight and I look forward to seeing you again, hopefully in person in a future time.
Thank you very much.
Well, again, thank you, the Miramasa Town Council, Pam, and all of you. Thank you for allowing me to come on board, come on for a few moments. If I'm elected, I will be able, what I want to do is bring greatness back to California. Especially in education, when we're not be there 40 or worse in education, we need to be able to bring our state back to. Where I first moved to California, we were number five in education across the country. So now we're 40, 40 or less. So we got 40 or lower. So we get out, we have to improve that. And also we have to make sure that we're not taxing our citizens out, out of California. Just one year alone, we lost 200,000 residents of California to being overtaxed and being underpaid. So, you know, we have to make sure that our, our citizens are well taken care of, not being overtaxed. And just like there's a bill right now that's going to be taxing those of us that enjoy owning firearms, wanting us to be able to have. They want to charge us another 10 to 12% increase on top of that of owning, for owning a firearm. So we got to make sure that we're not. Arbitrarily going in and disrupting the lives of our citizens in our community. And I want to make sure that we are doing the due diligence with our community and within our state. Look, Miramasa is part of a big district in San Diego County. It covers all the way from. The Los Penas Quito Preserve all the way to Alcoho. So we got to be careful how we take care of our community and specifically Miramasa is. Not doing so good because if you look at our roads, our infrastructure isn't really that great right now. And I would like our roads to be better. So with that, I hope you can let me because I want to make sure that we take care of Miramasa.
Thank you very much. Okay. Well, thank you both. And indeed, we look forward to seeing you in person. In addition to our upcoming meetings, there is the Miramasa Street Fair on Saturday, October 1st, and that will be an opportunity to. Gather in person on the street on Comida Ruiz between Miramasa Boulevard and New Salem. So perhaps we'll see both of you out there then. Thank you very much. And let's move along now. We have our regular government and community resources reports. First on the agenda in that section, Scripps Mesa Fireworks. I know that Michael Spencer is on family vacation. Danielle, I know you're active with the group. Anything that you'd know to report on behalf of Scripps Mesa Fireworks tonight?
Hello. When we got together with the Fourth of July Committee, there was some talk about explaining. What happened with the fireworks and getting it out there. So the information is out there. So people know what really happened. And what's we're looking forward to doing in the future. And right now they're just working on. Trying to decide where to put everything so that everybody can come together for the fireworks at the end of the evening.
Okay, so gearing up for next year. Sounds good. And then the next item on the agenda, we have Miramar College and we, I, Wes, you're, you're on under this section. And I know we also have Bernie on. Under our elected officials a little bit later. I don't know if the two of you want to speak back to back now at this time, if we want to bring. Bernie in to speak right after Wes or vice versa. That sound, sound good. Wes first and then Bernie. And we'll, we'll, we'll tag team you at this point. So Wes, you're on.
Absolutely. And that sounds like a good plan to, you know, then we're a little more cohesive. So, but Bernie is an elected official. I'm not. So that makes sense that we wound up in, in different places, but I guess I'd like to start off with killing the suspense on. On what we've been kind of skirting around Bernie and Rob and I. So I'd like to invite Rob into, if you'd like, Rob, to, to make that announcement. And then I can talk a little bit about what. We're going to do with that.
Absolutely. So, thank you, Wes. The Assemblymember, as, as you know, has. Advocating for all our communities in the 77th Assembly District. We had a plan. And Wes put me in touch with his team. And I came down to Miramar College and I got lost in the I building. And the I building was a building that I used to walk around in because it's all built up now. And I'm like, holy, and they're like, but you went to school here. I said, yeah, this was when it was all by itself. And we had dirt parking lots, but it still had some bungalows. So we went in and we took a look at the, the current Veterans Resource Center. And what they were offering, you know, men and women and their, and their, I guess, gosh dang it, I can't think of the term other than. It's their children, but the, their dependents, there you go. And, and so we went around and we took a look and Wes and his team. Came up with this big giant, you know, plan. And we took that back and. We initially had, had asked for 1.25 million dollars. And your Assemblymember was successful in doubling that. So, so now Miramar College has 2.5 million dollars. To really grow, extend, update, not only provide resources to our men and women on campus. There at Miramar, but also there is a satellite location on Miramar. And there's some really neat things that they want to do to allow those that are still working, the ability to maybe. At lunchtime or break or something to go over to this hub or it's like a hub and spoke kind of a concept where they can go to the spoke and, and maybe. Turn in some equipment or use some, you know, turn in some papers and work and stuff like that, but really. Update the facilities at Miramar. But, you know, I'm just, I'm super excited for Miramar College. Their team really rolled up their sleeves and, you know, expecting 1.2 and then coming back with 2.5 for them. And so. You know, we're very, very excited for Miramar College and the community of Miramasa.
Thank you very much. That is exciting.
It is like, that's an understatement right there. It is super exciting. Now, I, I don't know how many of you know, I'm, I'm a vet myself. And so when I started the position two years ago. That became one of the things that I wanted to really see happen was for us to increase our, our service to veterans. And military affiliated, Rob, might be a term that you were looking for. So. You know, we had what you saw, Rob, in the I building is the newly expanded Veteran Resource Center that we put together ourselves prior to this funding coming through. Prior to that, it was really just a, a, a very small converted office up in the admissions area in the K building. So. So that was an expansion, but it, it came woefully short of what we could do and need to do. Many of you probably don't know that Miramar College has about 2,200, a little more than 2,200 military affiliated students. That's, that's 20% of our student body. So we should be doing a lot more. And so we've taken that on. So Rob, you know, you, you gave us perhaps just a smidgen too much credit. In that we did roll up our sleeves, but we didn't have to work too hard because much of it was stuff that we already wanted to do. So that Veteran Resource Center that you're going to see, that you saw is going to just about triple in size. And it's going to include a computer lab where we can, we can provide space for veteran students to be together as they work on, on projects and homework and things like that. But also, you know, just housing the kinds of resources that they need to have in a specialized way. It's so fresh in my memory, that transition from military life back to civilian life. It is, it's incredibly difficult to make that shift. For, for non, non-vet folks, it's, it's just hard to describe. But that also is the basis of camaraderie. So when I was talking about my special heart, the special place in my heart for. Vet students, that student organization is one that I really love visiting because soon as I walk in the door, they, they're like, oh, you're a shipmate, you know, so. So it's really good. On MCAS Miramar, we have been limited by two things. One was that we were not funded. Like we are regular classes in the past for, for courses that we would, we would deliver actually on the base. That changed a year ago with some legislation. And so now we're able to be funded under, under the formula, the California Community College Formula. But also we are limited in the space that we could use because of internet issues. We cannot use the bases internet for security reasons. And so now part of the 2.5 million coming as part of this funding. Is going to allow us to run lines, our own lines out from the street, literally onto the base to our educational facility. And we'll be able to deliver a lot more classes. With, with better equipment and everything. So Rob, I can't tell you how, how grateful we are and we're looking forward to, to showing you what happens. And. You were instrumental in that. So thank you for that. So if I may, I'll move on to the other items on my list and I can try to move quickly because I know that I'm standing between bedtime and. Whatever or others. I'm not last on the, on, but I'm certainly whatever time I take contributes. But. First of all, of course, classes start on August 22nd. That's right around the corner. We're on a big push. Excuse me. We're on a big push to try to get students re-engaged, particularly focusing on students that we lost during the COVID. Pandemic, or at least that we're not out of that. But the, the real bulk of that. Community colleges across the nation have been hit very hard by this. Privates were expected to be hit hard in universities as well, but. You know, not to throw shade on, on my sister type of institutions, but they, they've always poached community college students when they need. To boost their numbers. So come on campus and they try to get those, those students, they, they target them. So, so there's that. But in addition to that, our students is, I know, most of you here know, we serve the most vulnerable population of folks who want to aspire to something better, a different kind of life. I myself was one of those. I grew up in a poor family in Pinesquitas, but cash poor. I remember living on lentil beans for weeks at a time. So. So my parents did everything they could to keep us in that great school district, but, but really couldn't afford it. That is the type of student that we serve. And those are the ones who, when, when things get difficult, are most likely to drop out or, or put their family first instead of continuing their education. There's a quote that I came across just recently, that community college students, more than 50% of them are one flat tire away from, from ending their college career. So that's how marginal a lot of these students are. And we see that in homelessness. And when I say homelessness, I'm not talking about the city epidemic, although you know, there's some spillover, but. But our students, I know, I know of personally know some students who are living in their cars and across the street from the college. And yet they're, they're persisting. They're hanging in there because they know that, that going to the community college is one way to do that. So. To, to try to, try to aspire to, to a better life and get back on their feet. Food insecurity is another great challenge for students. All of these things are getting in the way of students being able to pursue their college career. I'm describing those who are persisting, but many don't. And so, so that's hit us hard on the enrollment front. So with that, I would say Miramar is down about 6%. In our student population. And we're trying to get them back, re-engage, focusing on the message that, hey, this is a way to get, to change. Where you are in life and to make sure that you, you can pursue your dreams, continue to pursue your dreams. So let us help you. Let us come alongside you and help you with that. That's our message. We have our big Equity Summit coming up. The dates have just been set, October 27th and 28th. You'll recall that last year was our very first Equity Summit. And the 27th is the evening event, and that is the one that is focused on the community. So whatever speaker we secure for this. Last year was Constance Carroll, the, the former Chancellor for the District. But equity theme and speaking in a lecture type format for the community, we are planning on having that on campus, but we'll also be live streaming it as well. So. Please, please. please, um, please plan to participate in that. More to come in future reports on what the details will be with that. Uh, we mentioned the two point five million from uh, from Assemblyman Mancharen's office. Again, thank you, thank you, thank you. Can't, just can't say that enough. Uh, that doesn't come across us every day, folks. So you know, that's why my exuberance about it. Um, this Wednesday, uh, we'll be having a press conference on behalf of, and Bernie, I'm not sure if you were gonna speak to this.
I will.
You are, so. Oh, you'll be there. Okay. Did you want to speak to it or would?
No, go ahead and mention it.
Okay, Wednesday at at ten AM, um, the uh, the press conference with Representative Scott Peters will take place on the campus in front of the store bookstore. Uh, if you can make it, you're more than welcome and encouraged to to attend. This is in celebration and announcement of nine hundred and seventy five thousand dollars going to the district. This isn't just Miramar, uh, but to the district. And uh, that is going to help with O E R, that's uh, open uh, access educational resources, open educational resources is what it stands for. And so this is the the shifting from uh, costly textbooks to trying to make um, educational materials and resources available to students through other means. Um, or opening those textbooks availability up for students in in a less costly or free way. So um, but the open, uh, the O E R movement in particular is uh, put together by uh, volunteerism frankly, uh, by college professors and other educators uh, making resources available. So um, to do that, of course, there there needs to be support. Uh, the folks need to be paid for their time and their effort and for the materials that they pull together. So that's partly what that money will be supporting. Fourth of July Parade, I probably should have mentioned first because it was in the past. Um, normally Bernie's there for that. He was not able to be there, but uh, Miramar College, as you know, last year, I think we participated once before at some point in the past, but last year largely due to Bernie's efforts, we were uh, able to participate for the first time in quite a while. And I pledged at that time that we would make it an annual thing, at least as long as I'm around. And uh, and we are, uh, we came in bigger numbers this time with more vehicles. We had the E M T uh, school, just like we did last year with uh, the ambulance, but we also brought along the Fire Academy with uh, yeah.
Mass for clarification, Fourth of July Parade.
I think uh, he's talking about.
Parade, are you talking about?
He's he's.
Oh, the Scripps Ranch.
Miramasa did not do a Fourth of July Parade this year, unfortunately, because of a variety of reasons. Okay, that I I I thought you were probably uh, talking about that and excellent. And next year I anticipate there will be a Miramasa Fourth of July Parade again, probably dovetailed uh, as as in years past, the Scripps Parade ends about the time the Miramasa Parade begins. So those who want to be involved can do it.
But well, we will make every effort to make both of them. Um, and thank you for not scheduling them at the same time because that makes the logistics a lot easier for that. So uh, but we want to be there for all of our communities. So so we will certainly plan on on being a part of that as well. But we we just had a really good turnout and it was fantastic. And that the warmth uh, from the folks along the curbs uh, was really heartening because I I really feel like we are viewed as their college, this community's college. So we're our community's college. Uh, last that I would mention is uh, mark your calendars, please, uh, for October, Sunday, October second uh, from four to seven PM at Valley High, we will be having our major fundraiser that is Invest in Success. Um, and I would love to invite you, if you don't get, if get a uh, an invitation soon, then um, uh, please reach out. I'm gonna put my email in the chat box here. You can email me now and I'll make sure you're on the list to be invited. Uh, but it's good times. Um, Valley High is always good times, isn't it? So uh, that'll be a a great event. Um, and uh, and um, we're excited about that. So with that, I'll I'll in my report and uh, and turn it over to Bernie. Thank you very much.
Great.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Pam. Uh, as you all know, I represent not only Miramar, but Mesa College and City College and our continuing education, um, adult education college. Uh, so Wes gave you a great report. Uh, I'm excited about um, the fundraiser coming up. That goes to scholarships uh, for students at Miramar College, uh, many of who could be uh, former Miramasa High School students who are going there because Miramasa High School is one of our uh, biggest feeder high schools to Miramar College, as you all know. Uh, and one of the things that we do to try to promote that relationship is offer dual enrollment courses where students can take uh, college courses while they're in high school to get a head start. And we also have the Promise Program, which is a uh, a free tuition and scholarship that students at Miramasa High School can apply for. And they not only get uh, financial support, but they get wraparound services uh, uh, during the summer and during the time that they're out college to make sure they're successful. And our Promise Program has grown now uh, to uh, I think well over a thousand students in the district, maybe even more than that. And Miramasa is one of the important high schools that provides students for that. Uh, Wes, for your um, fundraiser, I would like to donate two tickets uh, that can be used by the Miramasa Town Council to the fundraiser. Uh, just to encourage Pam or somebody else to join us uh, that evening at the Valley High. Uh, and I'll contribute two tickets for Miramasa Town Council to be there. It's a fundraiser that I go to every year and I enjoy the inspirational stories that you hear about students at Miramar College.
Um, if I may, Bernie, I'll I'll join you in that. I'll provide two tickets as well, out of my own pocket. So absolutely, just.
Just because we want to expose the Town Council to those inspirational stories of students at Miramar College. Plus, it's a fun evening. They uh, they always put together a fun evening. As we said earlier, our district is looking into housing in a very big way. Uh, we received a uh, uh, from the state of California, a grant of about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do a feasibility uh, study at City College to look at how we could develop housing on the former Child Development Center a piece of property that we have that could be used for student housing and faculty housing. And we're looking at other opportunities now that the state is providing funds for that. Uh, as Chris Ward said, we've uh, gotten a hurdle where we can get federal funding. And we're really looking at maybe a bond program in twenty twenty four that uh, might include a uh, Performing Arts Center for Miramar, which I know the community of Miramasa would like to see uh, for many, many years. So we'll look at that possibility. Uh, but look at uh, housing possibilities at all of our campuses. Uh, we've also done real well in addition to our local legislative delegation to getting their support for programs like that. We received more than three million dollars from our congressional delegation. Uh, Congresswoman uh, Sarah Jacobs, uh, Juan Vargas, um, and uh, Scott Peters, who's announcing uh, his on Wednesday, but combined total of over three million dollars uh, to do things like a Dreamers Center and uh, what Scott Peters is gonna be announcing, zero textbooks. So we're getting great support from our local legislators. We've got great relationships with them, and I've really seen that improve over the last few years of my time on the board to getting that kind of support for Miramar College and for our other uh, colleges. As Wes said, we're struggling with enrollment to get students to come back. That's why we want Miramasa High School students to consider Miramar. Consider the Promise Program. One interesting fact is that after the pandemic, we're seeing uh, real increase in online learning. Before the pandemic, we were about seventeen percent online classes. Now we're about fifty percent of all of our classes are online. And if you look at our adult education programs, we've got an amazing online career technical education program that's all online where students can learn uh, to be a network technician, to be a Cisco technician, uh, all sorts of things uh, in short-term career programs. And you may have gotten this in the mail in the last uh, let's see, it's shiny. Uh, free classes for adult education that came in the mail recently. Uh, and it shows you what's available for adult learners to be able to change careers and to do so uh, in short-term classes at no cost, uh, into very high-paying jobs. So overall, all of our colleges are offering those continuing ed programs. Uh, and we're working to provide students uh, to come back to campus and to do in-person learning, but we're upping our online learning because there's a greater demand for that that we've seen after the pandemic. Uh, so that's kind of an overview of what's going on. Thanks again uh, for all that you guys are doing for the community and for your support of Miramar College.
Thank you very much. In fact, this exciting things happening right here at Miramar College and Miramasa Town Council will definitely work on uh, being more plugged in with you. We we enjoy that.
Thank you.
Okay, um, moving along back into the Government and Community Resources section. The next item on the agenda is the Miramasa Community Planning Group. Oh, Art, question, yes.
Yeah, excuse me, I actually had a question for Wes, if it's all right.
Oh, sure, sure.
Um, I'm also the CTE Department Chair for Miramasa High School, and we have a a very um, good relationship with the San Diego Community College District. Um, some of our courses, however, I'd love to strengthen the relationship between Miramasa High School and Miramar. Um, but there are certain instructors that you have there at Miramar that's just put a roadblock in between it. So what we've had to do for articulating courses is actually go to City College, Mesa College, and even Palomar. So it's it's hurting the relationship between Miramar and Miramasa when I have to tell my students, hey, well, if we want to, uh, if if you're wanting to look at graphics courses, or if you're wanting to look at multimedia courses, things that we actually offer at Miramar, where we're telling them you are articulating with City and City College will continue this way, or Mesa College with your multimedia will will do this. Because, and again, I don't want to name names, but we know that we know the person um, has put up that roadblock where we cannot um, uh, you know, have students just go over to over to Miramar. And I would love to have that relationship. But again, for the past twelve years or so, um, it's been non-existent in those particular areas.
So Art, first of all, thank you for bringing this up because I was not aware of this. So um, you know, I'll just right off the cuff without looking into it more. What I would say is that's not okay. Um, for a lot of reasons, and at the top of the list is not serving students. Of course, we need to dive in a little bit more to the transferability of specific courses that you're talking about. So I would ask you, if you don't mind, email me, please.
I would love it, yes.
In that private uh, you know, venue, share with me the person, I'll keep it in confidence, but but I'm from the classroom. I was an English professor, and so I know that world, I know that perspective, and as such, I'm also a rhetorician. So as such, I'm often often able to be persuasive with the faculty and help them see things a little bit more broadly than than traditionally they do. And you know, just without knowing the details, I'm gonna guess that that's at the core of of the resistance is is a traditional uh, traditionally minded faculty member. Um, so you know, I would like to pursue this and look into that more. Um, it's not just, you know, to serve Miramar or to serve Miramasa High School, but in that partnership, which I appreciate wanting to do that, I share that, but also the service to the students. The more different colleges they have on their transcript, the less helpful it is to them for transfer. And so there's a reason right there to try to make sure that we can get all of that onto one transcript for them. Of course, within our district, you know, things are transcribed to the same. So now, so that's not as much of an issue here, but but it would be a lot better for students if we can, if we can keep them here. And then for those who want to transition, you know, in person to Miramar, it makes it a lot easier if we have that relationship very uh, deeply uh, built. So thank you, Art. I'm I'm very appreciative of you bringing this up. Exactly the kind of stuff I need to hear in these meetings. So thank you.
Thank you. I I will. I'll email you and maybe we can even uh, discuss it further a little later on.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Glad we could be a conduit for information there. That's important. Um, Jennifer, did you have a a comment, question? Yeah, okay. Uh, so at this point, thank you. Stick around for the for for the rest, you guys, if you can, but uh, um, I'll now call on Jeff for Miramasa Community Planning Group report.
Okay, um, I can't say I have particularly good news here. Um, as you know, the city has been working on an update to the Miramasa Community Plan. Uh, they want to add a lot of housing, twenty four thousand units, mostly in the shopping centers along Miramasa Boulevard and in Serrano Mesa, as well as some down in Rumor. Since it was clear that the Planning Commission really wants them to do that, we said, well, if you want to do that, you know, show how you can provide the infrastructure and facilities for that big an increase in the population. So they've come out with their draft uh, Community Plan Update. You can find it on the Planning Group page on the Town Council website, and I would encourage everyone, everyone to look at that. And so that showed severe problems, deficiencies in in parks and park acreage and park points, say now, use it, recreation centers and swimming pools. You know, for the new population, they're they're projecting uh, what's in that plan doesn't doesn't really work. So then they they took the draft Community Plan to Planning Commission. But they made one change. They had reevaluated the population estimate. So that instead of the hundred and seventy six thousand, they had in the document that was published, they had reduced it to a hundred and thirty thousand uh, through means that I'm still trying to get straightened out. But they claimed that that solved the problem for them and brought the Community Plan into uh, consistency with park standards. So basically, they're saying they can add twenty four thousand units, sixty six thousand new people to the community without any significant increase in park space other than the internal parks that will be built at the areas where they're proposing very high-density development. So then there's also a draft traffic study that went along with that. Um, it's also a disaster. It shows that with the new development, all of our intersections and road segments are a level of service F during rush hours. Um, they don't really seem concerned about this when this went to Planning Commission, I pointed this out, and the response I got back from the uh, from the city's representative was, um, yep, that's right. Um, so I'm quite concerned that the city is not really taking the need for infrastructure seriously, and they're just proceeding ahead with getting as many units as they can into the into the community. And there's one more thing. Today at City Council, the Mayor's Build Better SD Program was um, was approved. Um, so this is kind of the the other half of the Parks Master Plan. Um, between this program and the Parks Master Plan, the city has eliminated the community-specific FBA programs, which means that all developer fees in the community go downtown and someone downtown decides where they're going to be spent. And prior to these proposals, all developer fees paid by development within the community, stayed in the community and paid for projects that were identified in our community plan. Um, that's now gone. Um, the Build Better Program essentially does just that. There's no real plan for facilities. There are a lot of promises, a lot of pretty pictures, a lot of talk about equity. But basically, the proposal is to take all the developer fees and send them downtown where someone there will figure out how to spend them. So I'm not pleased with any of these things, but that's um, that's the way things are going. So the Planning Group um, does meet the third Monday of each month. We'll be meeting two weeks from today, also virtually, just like on Zoom, just like, just like this one. Um, the Community Plan Update Committee has been meeting prior to the Planning Group meetings. Uh, usually at five thirty, sometimes at six, that's that'll be announced um, for the meeting. I would guess this one will be at five at five thirty. So if you're interested in this, I would encourage you to attend those meetings and participate. One of the things that the Chair of the Planning Commission said at the end of the meeting uh, at which the city presented the draft plan is that they must be doing a terrific job because they aren't getting anyone coming there to complain. So that's where we are. It seems to be proceeding along um, under its own momentum, and I'm expect it's going to continue.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Um, Miramasa Community Recreation Group, Joe.
Yeah, I I want to follow. I only have a couple items, but I want to follow up with Jeff on that. Uh, they presented this this Community Plan Update to the Park and Rec Board uh, last week. And And what they've done is they've changed our our allocation of of land in the city now from from acreage for every thousand people to points. So you get points now. So if we put a a drinking fountain in a park, you get so many points for that. So on this plan that they presented right now, they're talking about it was seventy-five thousand people, and we were minus, Mira Mesa was minus over three thousand points. And they're projected with this one hundred and thirty thousand people, we go from a minus three thousand points to over a minus six thousand points. So by increasing the population, we're doubling the amount of decrease we have in our parks. So what this means is we're supposed to have like three swimming pools, five recreation centers, all kinds of stuff in Mira Mesa. It's never gonna happen. We're just gonna get inundated inundated with all these units that they want to put over in the Vons parking lot and the Home Depot parking lot. And let people take the bus because you don't need a car if you're by rapid transit, so um, it it's really a serious thing for our community and you know, if you guys want to have a good laugh, go go on to in the City Council and find out what these like Community Plan Update has in store for our community. It's really something. Um, getting back on a lighter note, the Padres are winning. Wagenheim is in progress, which is which is great. It's, we've been working on that for over twenty-five years. The City Council has recently adopted an ordinance to get our cameras back in the parks and stuff. They need one more reading before it's official, so we're waiting for that. Then we're gonna get some some cameras back in our parks. Uh, we have a new flag over at the Veteran Center in Mira Mesa. Uh, there was a lot of graffiti over the weekend over there, and so we already have cameras over there. We're gonna look and see if we can find these people that are responsible and, uh, hold them accountable. So Mira Mesa is a great community, and Mr. Spurlock, I appreciate your input there. Um, we don't want that going on in in Mira Mesa. So I, Mr. Lundberg, he's one of the best guys we've ever had over there. I'm sure he will help that problem. Uh, Mr. Rob Newton, you know, you're always there. Unfortunately, Rob was born in Mira Mesa. But, you know, we push that by him, still had him here. We have a great community, but we really need to pay attention to what's going on right now, so don't don't go to bed without worrying about some of this stuff. We really need people to pay attention. Jeff is our leader, so he's he knows what's going on. He's on top of all this stuff. I don't know how he keeps it up, but we're good for him. And that's my report.
Thank you, Joe, indeed. Okay, well, mov- moving along to, uh, Mira Mesa High School news. We already started out with our students that we recognized, but Jennifer, is there anything else that you'd like to report tonight? Oh, you're muted.
I know, I just realized that. Sorry about that. Uh, no, the only thing I was gonna say is I'm sure you've noticed um, on the corner that we once again have our construction team back on campus. And, uh, that's good news because we are getting a brand-new, um, engineering department. And actually, I'm gonna refer to Spurlock because he is our Department Chair. He knows everything that's going on. Um, engineering is also a CCTE course, and they are, wow, magnificent. I mean, they're doing great things. They're gonna have to teach, I believe, out of the library. Is that correct, Art?
Well, we're going to move them back into their new facility, uh, second semester. So we're looking at finishing uh, in December, and then them being able to move back into a completely upgraded, brand-new facility uh, by January twenty-third.
So it's gonna be great. So that's the latest and greatest. Everybody is on break now. Summer school is over and so the school is kind of closed down for the next couple of weeks and then
It's really break time. When do teachers report back and when do classes start at Mira Mesa High?
We we start back on the twenty-fifth, Wednesday, the twenty-fifth, and then the students come back on the twenty-ninth.
Okay. Thank you so much.
So watch out.
Okay, and finally, in this section, I, because we're on Zoom and I don't, I didn't make contact with Ina earlier today, Mira Mesa Library Branch Manager. I don't know if she's on the Zoom for this. So we may not have her with us in person tonight. I can just, uh, quickly, on behalf of the library, say the summer reading program is still ongoing. It started beginning of June and it goes through August, and there's a fun activity for adults as well as kids. The library mascot now is Odie the Coyote. Odie, the book-loving coyote, and instead of the, uh, Find Waldo that we've done the past couple of summers, there's a little cardboard Odie that every branch has hidden somewhere, and you can go in and get your passport stamped when you found Odie and get a little pin and then be entered in a drawing for, uh, um, Central Library, the library bookshop, actually, uh, you can, uh, get a price there. Most branches, it's a Friends of the Library, yeah, but it it's a lot of fun. Uh, other things, but
I said, can adults play? I want to do that.
Adults, I think, yeah, adults can also play in Finding Odie, indeed. And speaking of Odie, the Mira Mesa Branch Library will be participating in Mira Mesa Street Fair on Saturday, October first, and Odie will be making an appearance at the street fair, so, uh, watch for, uh, Odie, the library mascot, to be there at Street Fair. It should be a lot of fun. Uh, let's see, that covers that section, and now we are moving into elected officials. So we have our San Diego Unified School Board Member Sabrina Bosso. I believe, uh, Sabrina is on the call somewhere, right?
See her, Pam.
Oh, maybe not. Okay, I thought thought she was going to be here, but maybe she is on vacation. In that case, move, we've already had Bernie Reinerson, City Council Member Chris Kate, Denise Torres is on vacation. I don't know if Sheldon Zeman was able to join us tonight. He was going to possibly pop in. He had another commitment, but thought he might be able to juggle it. Jeff, was Sheldon able to jump in?
No.
Not not, not at this time. Okay, well, I know that, uh, Chris has been involved in a lot of community things and, uh, we'll we'll look forward to having, uh, Denise joining us on at this September meeting. Assemblyman Brian Mainshine, Rob Newton, we already had you. Was there anything else, uh, that you have to add?
What, yeah, sorry, yeah, so just, that was just one of two things that I I wanted to report on, but uh, I would like to just take a quick minute and again, just echo, uh, Joe's comments on, uh, Mr. Wes. Uh, I can't tell you, I I want to go back and get a another degree. Uh, his team over there at Miramar College is just absolutely incredible, but like Joe said, because I wasn't born in Mira Mesa, uh, it was gonna cost me four times as much to go back, so, um, you know, we're we're we'll go a different direction. But, uh, I just wanted to give just a a quick update. Um, you may have seen, uh, some some announcements in media. Um, right before, uh, the summer recess went into effect on July one, so the last week of June, uh, the governor signed, uh, Assembly Member Mainshine's AB sixteen forty-one. And that was our sexually violent predator, uh, piece of legislation. And some of you folks might remember last, uh, winter, uh, late fall, October, November, there was going to be a placement of an SDP into the Ranch of Bernardo area. And, uh, during those discussions in Town Hall meetings, a a number of concerns, a number of issues uh, were kind of brought forth, and and Brian, uh, took a look at a lot of that, and we had um, a number of items, uh, in the bill, in the piece of legislation. Uh, however, um, the the one that that really seemed to to focus in in, you know, for for community members. So so just so everybody kind of has an idea, uh, there there are there are, uh, three levels of of, uh, uh, so, well, there there's three levels of violent or or, uh, the SCP is the is the worst of the worst in in the three categories. And what they have is what's called a conditional release program. And during, and and this is through a team of medical doctors, uh, that through evaluations, uh, feel that these people are, have have served their time, uh, they're receiving the medical attention. Um, and and, you know, everything kind of sort of points to, uh, trying to reintegrate them back into society. Um, and so what AB, uh, sixteen forty-one, uh, believe it or not, we were letting these these individuals come out and we weren't monitoring them. There was, there was no monitoring other than periodic check-ins, periodic, uh, uh, you know, where were you, what happened, and and kind of, kind of like an honor system. And so your assembly member was not, um, you know, a father of two, two young, uh, daughters, um, uh, wasn't too keen on that, and so we worked with our law enforcement agencies and, uh, came up with sixteen forty-one. And so anybody in that's going to be released into this program will have a twenty-four-hour, seven-day-a-week GPS monitoring device on their ankle. Uh, that way, we know, the community knows, community leaders, our law enforcement agents, uh, know where these folks are, uh, you know, three hundred and sixty-five days a year whether in this program. Um, and so, uh, just again, uh, giving our folks, uh, our law enforcement, uh, folks tools to to be able to, uh, you know, uh, be able to to monitor and and take enforcement action if necessary. But again, uh, prior to this, uh, there there was no, uh, mo- monitoring of sorts other than an honor system of of, you know, periodic check-ins to see if the the folks are there making their meetings and and their appointments with with the various, uh, as their commitments as part of the conditional release program. Um, you know, we, you don't have to go far to to know that we've, you know, every community has 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 been impacted in one way or another in something like this, and this is just one more tool to give families, parents and children, uh, a little bit of a, you know, uh, uh, I I guess, uh, advan- I guess, uh, a a tool to help curb any sort of mischief or or anything, uh, that would harm uh, or or hinder a a child or or a or impact a family. And so, uh, we're very happy that AB sixteen forty-one not only was passed, but it was it was signed by the governor, governor, uh, right before the break. So, um, happy to answer any questions. Um, but again, uh, thank you so much. I know you guys are ready to, but you it's still breaking my heart that, uh, you know, you only got a few, a few more months representing Mira Mesa because, uh, I just don't know what I'm gonna do with myself, uh, uh, not being able to, uh, represent you guys from from the Assembly Member's Office. It just, I I just, I don't know how to, you know, uh, how to take it, you know, it's it's kind of a bittersweet, uh, uh, thing. Sweet for Joe and 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 Jeff and and all the regulars who've had to put up with me for all these years, but it's nice to get, uh, it's it's been an absolute pleasure and an honor and and, uh, I don't, I, like I tell you guys, many of you have heard this, I don't tell people I'm from San Diego. I tell people I'm from Mira Mesa. And, uh, you know, I I bleed blue and gold all day long.
Thank you, Rob, indeed. Okay, well, uh, moving along to, uh, the next step uh, person on the list, we have, uh, Michaela Valk. Is Michaela here? For the mayor?
Emailed earlier that she had submitted, uh, some information to the newsletter, so maybe we can just refer people to the newsletter.
Well, we refer you to what she submitted for the newsletter. That sounds great. And then after Michaela, I believe I have seen Amanda Berry, uh, is here with us. Amanda, you are on.
Hi, everyone. Sorry about the the lighting. I'm outside, but good to see you all. Again, I'm Amanda Berry, and I am here representing County Supervisor Tara Lawson-Reemer, District Three. And kept a couple of updates. So, you know, when we're in a crisis, we need three numbers to remember, right? That's why we have nine-one-one. Uh, but now we have nine-eight-eight. If you haven't heard, it's a brand-new phone number to support people who are in mental health crisis. Though people who are experiencing thoughts of suicide, mental health crisis, drug or alcohol or substance use crisis, they can call and get help for themselves or for a loved one, and that number is nine-eight-eight. It's only three numbers because it's super easy to remember. And anybody who calls that number will be connected with a trained clinician. And that's how someone can get connected to services like mobile crisis response teams that I've talked a lot about um, with you all, so, um, really excited about this nine-eight-eight rollout across the entire nation. Um, the second update I have for you all is about monkeypox. And there have been twenty-seven known cases of monkeypox in the region. And as we see those numbers increase, the county and our medical professionals are doing everything that they can to address the the risk, uh, treatment and prevention through vaccination. Uh, we get new totals every Friday at the county. Um, so if you go to the county website, uh, there's a monkeypox page, and those numbers are updated every Friday. And if folks want information about monkeypox or how to get a vaccine, they can call two-one-one. So we've got nine-eight-eight today, and then we've got two-one-one. So those, uh, three numbers are really important. Um, vaccine, uh, quantities are currently limited, so we don't actually have, um, as as many as we would like, but as they get distributed from the California Department of Public Health, we're gonna get them out as quickly as possible, in particular to those who've been exposed and who are at highest risk. Um, and that said, how do you know if you're at high risk? Monkeypox is primarily spread by, uh, skin-to-skin contact with sores, scabs, or bodily fluids from someone who has monkeypox. It can be spread by anyone in any community. And at this time, monkeypox is primarily spreading in the male, uh, gay, bisexual, men who have sex with men community. Um, but it's really important to note that monkeypox is not a sexually transmitted infection, so anybody can get it if they are exposed. It's just the the community that it's, uh, primarily found in right now. So I, um, I can share more information about monkeypox if folks are curious um, or want more information. Again, we are here to support the community on that. Um, and then the the last thing is about the the Delmar Bluffs. Um, it's in our district, and, you know, folks asked us to contact state legislators in Sacramento and make sure that we were on the list for state funding to fix that problem, and you you all know with the epicenter and everything, you know, when when folks come and and rise their voices, it'd be, you know, folks take action. And so that happened with Delmar Bluffs. And, uh, we're slated to receive three hundred million to help relocate the tracks off the seaside bluffs. Um, that's all I've got for you tonight. Um, if you have questions, happy to take them. Um, I think you all have my contact information, but I'll put it again in the chat.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thanks.
Okay, and after Amanda, we have got, uh, State Senator Tony Atkins. Diana Laura is Diana here?
She's not.
Okay, and then for Congressman Scott Peters, I got an email from Priscilla Huang, and she emailed me an update, and I'll give that to Jeff for the minutes, so you can, uh, read her report in the minutes. And that takes us to open forum, and I did not previously tell people to sign up for open forum in the chat, so I'll just throw the floor open right now for anybody who would like to speak for two minutes. Um, items not on agenda, and it, gee, it looks like we're almost on time. I said that was going to be coming up at eight-twenty-five, and, uh, it's a few minutes past at eight-thirty, so we're doing okay. Joe, you you have an open forum item?
Yes, the, uh, the airshow at Miramar is gonna be on September twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. Finally, they're back.
Okay. Twenty-four, twenty-five. Any other open forum announcements?
And you've got one more.
Kent, Kentley.
Hey, Pam. Hey, everyone. Um, just got back from walking into Mira Mesa and, uh, giving my daughter a bath at the moment. But I just wanted to say hi. As you all know, I'm running for San Diego City Council, um, to represent our district and, uh, looking forward to the November election. Um, have a lot to catch up on, and I I feel like, uh, Jeff, I mean, thanks for also providing an update tonight, because I think, um, there's more and more happening at the city all the time, but I feel like, uh, raises a lot of questions, so look forward to catching up with folks, um, in general, as we look forward, so, thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Okay, uh, any other open forum?
I just I actually have a question for Danielle. Um, whenever you find out, like, the best way that you're gonna get the information out as to what happened with the Fourth of July fireworks and the parade and all of that stuff, can you send something out to the board? And let us know, only because I, so many people have asked me, and I don't even know. I don't even know really what to tell them. And so if there's something that's public, then I can just kind of refer them to that. They're like, what happened? You know, everybody else had them. Why didn't we have them and, you know?
My Michael put out a really nice letter that I just kept repeating over cut and paste, cut and paste. So there was always the same wording, but I'll let him know.
Okay.
To put something together as much as he knows.
Yay. Um, let's see. Next, uh, any other open forum? In that case, uh, we have our treasurer's report, we're closing MMTC committee reports, but Jonathan uh was not able to zoom in. I think he's out of town, right, and not able to zoom in. Street Fair, Jeff Stevens.
All right, we will be doing the Miramasa Street Fair on October first. Uh, we have fifty vendors signed up so far. And there's still quite a ways from the event yet, so that's going well. Because it's an outdoor event, we don't expect to have a problem with COVID, even if it does pick up a little bit. Um, I don't think that's gonna have, cause it's a problem with the event this year, so you can pretty well count on having that event, and I would encourage everyone to come, tell your friends about it, and um and and if you want to have a booth there, sign up for a booth.
Okay, and Street Street Fair Committee is uh meeting. That wasn't one of the ones that got publicized in the newsletter.
No, the Street Fair Committee will be meeting. I need to schedule a time. Um, uh, usually we meet on the fourth, Thursday of each month, but because I've been out of town, I have been able to have a street fair meeting at the usual time, so I'll have one sometime early this month. If there's anyone other than those on the committee who would like to attend that meeting, please let me know, and I will invite you.
Sounds good. And that that saves ways to uh my turn on the agenda for Volunteer of the Year Dinner. And Volunteer of the Year Dinner Committee is indeed going into high gear this month because we are planning to honor Jennifer Qualvic as our most recent Volunteer of the Year, and I like this very much because Mr. Rob Newtonson, we're going to be doing it this fall. Look for mid to late October because uh we 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 want to do it while we have those that we have worked with for a long time still around, as well as anybody new who would like like to come too. So uh, I've got a couple of dates from Jennifer that worked for her, and I'll be trying to pull the committee together this month. Jeff and I had our vacation in July rather than in August this year, so we're back home now. And uh, looking forward to plan for uh a a an event in uh mid to late October, so stay tuned. And let's see, that's right. I I, oh, and then Banner District, Jennifer. Uh, again, we already talked about the students. So was there anything else you need to say for Banner District at this time?
Quick, because I just got an email from the company yesterday. Um, and so this is good news. So you're gonna see our new banners come down pretty soon because um, along with the street fair, they're changing, of course, the date on there. So the street fair is gonna go up, and also uh we are having a Sesame Place. Then we have Commission Miramasa to be the ones that have the banners up.
Oh, how fabulous.
And we're getting some money for it, so that is gonna go into uh very much-needed credit. Because we're still gonna be a little bit short as far as like some of the street fair banner processing and up and down, so that'll help take care of that. So those are gonna both go up together. I said make sure that all the street fair goes up, but the, I think Sesame um Place was gonna have about fifty banners.
Okay.
So I I would imagine those are probably gonna be pretty bright and pretty fun to see, so.
Okay, so we can look for those banners going up about
I believe they're going up like the first part of September.
Right.
Yeah.
Very good. Okay, and last but not least, we have membership report on the agenda. Is Yvonne here tonight? I don't think I see her, so uh, I'll just, in general, encourage everybody, if you haven't renewed your membership yet, renew. Uh, when we had been planning on this month to be an in-person meeting at our last board meeting, we had an in-person board meeting at the Newtown Council Office. Uh, for those of you who don't know, our little office where the board and other committees do in-person meetings has shifted from being in the office mall to over in that bank of shops near Post Atlantics that that's been made available to us. It's a uh, it's 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 an on loan to the Town Council Office. It's still one that has a sign that says leasing, but for the moment, we 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 have the use of that, and so it it's a nice place to be able to have in-person board meetings. Yvonne has the membership cards, so at our next in-person meeting, um, either September or October, not sure at this point, but uh we we will have membership cards that can be handed out for those who have renewed. So everybody, get somebody new to join. Renew your membership if you haven't, and uh have a great end of summer and move on into the fall. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night.